I'm ready. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I am going to call our Jackson, Massach County work session to order. First of all, I want to make sure that I mentioned that we are still operating under the governor's executive order. Virtually meeting also let everyone know that our meeting will be recorded and also streamed so the public can have access. With that, this powerful moment of silence. Thank you. Next will be roll call. Kevin Alexander.
I'm here.
Wayne. Wayne Arnold.
I'm here.
Doris Black.
Here.
Jim Campbell.
Here.
Carol Carter Estes. Janice Hampton. Janice.
Present.
AJ Massey.
Here.
Shannon Stewart.
Here.
Carol Carter, you on? We'll check Carol. Before we start the agenda, I want to again thank and let the teams have been working so hard feeding our students week after week after week, making sure they have been fed properly, adding routes, locations, so we don't miss any students. We appreciate that and that effort and the job you've been doing for the last several weeks. In addition to that, I want to thank our teachers and administrators for continually keeping our students engaged, providing online and hard copy lesson plans, again, to keep them engaged during this process. Y'all have done an excellent job. Next on the agenda, JMCBA report, Janice Carroll.
Hello, good evening.
Hello, Janice.
Is my sound okay? Is my sound okay?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, great, thank you, want to make sure. This week, I just want to remind everybody that it's PTA started Teacher Appreciation Week back in 1984. So all this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think during these circumstances, people appreciate teachers now that we're not able to fulfill our roles in our traditional ways. May 5th has always been National Teacher Day, of course, that's tomorrow. Typically, JMCBA would have a banquet and honor those teachers and other employees who are retiring. We're not able to do that this year. We'll have to find a way to show those teachers we appreciate them and as they move into a new phase of their lives. Also, Thursday night, you are going to be granting tenure to some of our teachers. I want to congratulate them on that. And yes, as you said, this distance learning has been stressful for everyone. We have coped, I think, the best with what we can. And as we're moving forward to figure out a new normal, I hope that the school system continues to engage and ask teachers how they view the best practices to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Okay, next up, our financial report. Jackson Massach County School System Financial Service Director, Holly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have five budget amendments this month, the first four of which are in the General Purpose School Fund. Item number one, $10,234. This is insurance recovery funds received for wind damage to South MacAsco. Item number two, $10,000. This is a contribution from Southern Management Services to be used for student scholarships. Item number three, $8,786. This amendment transfers funds within the Maintenance Department to be used towards general maintenance and repair work. Item number four, $28,000. This amendment transfers funds from the diesel fuel account to cover additional legal fees and consulting services. Item number five is in the Education Capital Fund. This amendment appropriates fund balance to use towards the following projects. Lockroom additions at West Bemis Middle School and JCT. Masonry repair at Lincoln Elementary. Parking improvements and additional parking at Nova Early Learning Center. Secure entrances at schools, plus additional classrooms and restrooms at Community Montessori and additional parking at Lincoln Elementary. As remaining funds allow, they will be used towards the identified list of other potential projects. And you'll see the breakdown of those projects on the actual budget amendment on page five. Are there any questions on those?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, it's very simple, Holly, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Janice, okay.
Okay, yes, okay. I just wanted to know the way that these budget amendments are outlined concerning number two first, the $10,000 new money. Will we be able to access or get access to what students receive those scholarships and how much?
Yes, Superintendent Washington is working others to determine the criteria and the selection of the students that will receive those funds.
Okay.
Yes, that was part of our agreement with SMS, yes.
Okay. Also, on three and four concerning those particular monies, would there be something in the budget once these monies are spent? After they are transferred from one funding to the next? Will we have, I guess, a copy of it just to see how much was spent and where it was spent?
The eight thousand seven hundred. Yes, yes.
It's going to be transferred from the software account to the materials and supplies elsewhere. And so I was just thinking that once these monies have been spent for those specific purposes, if we would have an outline generating as to showing how they were spent and when they were spent, should I say? And this is for number three and four.
Yes, we can get that for you. I can say that the supply account, that money will be added to the maintenance supply account. And they don't necessarily spend the $8,786 on one PO or even two or three POs. It's used as needed for various supplies. And so we could certainly pull enough purchase orders or invoices that would add up to that amount if you would want us to do that. But to identify a specific purchase of supplies with that exact money. I mean, we can pull, we can pull its finitures in that amount and show you that.
Okay, but my only concern is just to show that it was spent towards that particular use where it's been, well, where it's been taken away from, it should show that it has been spent towards the general maintenance, repair work, as well as the diesel fuel account. I'm talking about three and four together, okay? I just wanted to see if that, something that we could trace to show that our monies are actually going to these particular items.
Yes, that would be no problem. We can print, we can generate a report once the amendment is approved by the commission and posted, and it will show the transfer of funds from that one account to the other. So I can definitely get you that.
Okay, and then lastly, on number five, when it says there's remaining funds allowed that would be used towards the identified list of other potential projects, you know, as the leader rise, I guess you can outline those potential projects and just service them to the board.
Yes, we have a list of projects out there already that if we have a residual, say if it's $10,000 from a project and we know we need to replace an intercom or carpet in a specific place, and that's where it would go to. So we keep a running list of projects all the time, large and small. And occasionally, we have a little bit of residual money from larger projects that we can apply to smaller projects. So we have an identified list already.
And the list actually printed on the actual budget amendment on page five, you can see where it states that the available funds would be used towards the following potential projects, and it lists out five different projects there.
Yes, okay, I do see that, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next, I've not posted. Yes.
I'm sorry, one other question, and you might point out on number item five, education capital. Once we transfer this money, what does that leave us in the education capital fund balance?
It leaves us about $10,000.
We'll have about $10,000. So our ability to do anything in FY21 will depend on new funding, is that correct?
Yes, or will depend on if there's funding left in this year. If it ends up that we don't spend this full amount of funding that we're transferring into the capital line items, then we'll just show, we can pull it back out of fund balance next year and appropriate it. Okay, I've not posted the general purpose April financial statement yet, but I'll have it ready for you on Thursday's, for Thursday's meeting. Superintendent Washington and I were notified by email from Ms. Bell last Friday that our current local taxes are projected to come in approximately $7.5 million under budget due to a shortfall in local taxes. The shortfall represents 19% of the total budgeted local option sales tax. We're also told that we could expect a transfer of at least $1.5 million from Local Purpose Tax Fund at the end of the year so that, that would leave us with a local tax revenue shortfall of approximately $6 million this year. This will put us with a fund balance of approximately $7.5 to $8 million at year end, which is down from the previous projection of $13.5 million. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about the local funding projections for next year, if that's okay. In addition to the current year sales tax shortfall, we were given projections for next year, which includes a $10.2 million reduction in local taxes budgeted. This is an overall 21.77% reduction in local budgeted tax dollars as compared to this current fiscal year. The current Maintenance of Effort Funding statute requires that the county legislative body comply with the necessary budget requirements set by the state's basic education program, which requires the same level of funding to be budgeted next year with an allowable exception to reduce funding based on ADMs. For our district, this equates to about $472,000 based on a decline of ADMs of 118 students. It is anticipated that the legislature will address Maintenance of Effort Funding requirements in some manner when they reconvene on June 1st. As we move into fiscal year 21, and keeping in mind the projected funding reductions, we should, that were presented by the county budget committee, we should remember that the district has requirements that have to be met in order to continue to receive our level of federal funding. We have to prove that we've complied with special education, maintenance of effort requirements of spending the same actual amount either per pupil or total overall dollars as in the previous year. We also have requirements of our Title I program, which mandate that we have a documented supplement, not supplant methodology. Some of our grants, such as the Priority Schools Grant and the AXY Grant, are specifically targeted to schools for supplemental services as approved by the state. The CARES Act funding that we will be receiving requires to the greatest extent possible that we continue to pay employees and contractors during the period of any disruptions or closures due to pandemic. With this funding, we have to provide equitable services to local private schools, which will reduce the amount of the CARES Act funding that's available for our school district. With the current projected increase of $711,000 in our BEP funding as of the April estimate, we are required to spend at least $489,000 of that towards an increase in instructional salaries and/or benefits. Additionally, the school district is charged annually as allowable by law for trustee's commission at approximately $700,000, which goes to the county and charged for finance office accounting services of $442,000. Although we were told that the accounting services would be reduced to $275,000 next year. As you can see, there are just a lot of considerations as we move forward with preparing our budget, especially if it includes this unprecedented reduction in local tax funding. That's all I have unless there are any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I had another, just a follow-up favorite question to ask Holly. She gave us a lot of dollar number figures and percentage number figures in talking about like ADMs and all that. Holly, is there a way that you could put all of that in an email and send that to us? Because I was trying to write it down as fast as you were saying it. But if I could just see it on a piece of paper, and I feel like I'm probably not the only one of us that feels that way because, I mean, obviously because of the pandemic, we do understand that the sales tax dollars that the county is going to take in this year are down, but we need to see, for me, I want to see on paper what that really looks like for us as a school system. And it's a lot easier for me to digest it line by line on a, like in an email or on a piece of paper. If you don't mind to, all of those numbers and percentages that you just told us, if you could send that to us in an email, that would be wonderful.
I will get that to you before the night's over.
Thank you, Holly, I appreciate it.
Holly.
Yes, sir.
Let me make sure I understand one thing. Maintenance of effort is a budget to budget comparison. So what I think I heard you say, that as we look to FY21, we still budget for the same local funding that we had last year. But we should expect to receive over $10 million less than we were budgeted for this year. Now, in effect, in FY20, we're going to receive $6 million less. But in FY21, we can budget up there for maintenance of effort, but we should expect to receive an additional four and a half million dollars less than we're receiving this year. Is that what I heard you say?
Well, not necessarily. The numbers that the county gave us were for budgeting purposes. And my point was that the Maintenance of Effort requirement is that they fund, they budget us at that level with an exception for a loss of students. But the numbers that we received for budget were about $10.2 million less than last year. And so the reduction in students would equate to about $472,000. So I'm not quite sure how to handle that for budget purposes, and we do have a meeting with the county this week, and we can certainly discuss that. But it's my understanding that the current MOE law states that the budget has to show a funding that meets the state's BEP requirements, which is the same level as the prior year less an amount for consideration of losses students.
Right. I think, I think we said about, I thought I was saying the same thing you just said. Let me ask you, you also said that you anticipated some legislative action in June relative to the MOE. Did you say that?
Yes, it's kind of been out there that this topic will be brought up. However, I have no idea what angle it will take.
Okay, I think, but back to Shannon's point, these numbers are stunning to me. And I think it would be helpful, I think Shannon has a good point, if we could boil that down into just some, because I'm not sure how we handle this based on what we've just, we've just heard and what we've just learned. I'm not sure how we, how we, how we handle this as a district. We're about to lose almost, not quite, but close to half of our fund balance in FY20. The rest of it will be gone, but we won't even have touched, you know, all of the deficit for next year unless we do draconian cuts in my, what I can see in our budget. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
I think, I think Shannon makes a great point. I think for the board, it'd be helpful to boil this down to just a few very basic numbers and so everybody can understand just how significant an issue this is that we're facing. And I'm not, I'm not sure how we do. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Holly? I just want to chime in concerning the information we received from County Finance Department. And I actually did some, some follow-up concerning state bill 1962 and House Bill 2001 concerning budget adoption during these times. And I also reached out to TSBA, and there's some confusion, I think, when you read the document. And I had that document, I'll send it to Janet to send to you guys so you actually can see what I'm talking about. There's some confusion about funding other than maintenance of effort. So when you see the wording, you can see the confusion. So basically, what we're going to do is schedule a meeting with the county, Finance Committee, along with Dale. And we may bring BM, TSBA in to assist us with this process. And what we don't want to do is start wholesale shredding our budget here in our students. So I think clarity and understanding is most important at this, at this point. So you'll be hearing upcoming week about meetings we have scheduled. Hopefully, Budget Committee will be scheduling, scheduling a meeting soon. So we'll have a series of meetings and try to get some clarity before we start cutting and shredding when we really may not have to in some instances. Okay, any other questions about Holly's financial report? Next up, Massach County Financial Director Karen Bell. That's a financial update in the county.
I'm sure you really want to hear me after what Holly just said. Let me just kind of tell you a little bit about the Budget Committee that started hearings today. They have asked all of the departments to look at, they started at 3% cuts, but today they started asking for 30% cuts. So we are looking at furloughing employees going to three or four days a week. They've asked the state legislature to postpone the 3.46% increase mandated for elected officials. And yes, we are looking out to the governor and the state legislature regarding the maintenance of effort. It is not a problem facing just Madison County. We were on the phone with Williamson County and Knox County today. Many of them are in the same boat that we're in. As Holly said, our projected numbers for April, May, and June show a 50% shortfall in sales tax. Next year, our budget is predicated on a 25% shortfall for the 12-month period. We're also looking at a 30% decrease in business tax, 15% decrease in gas tax, 50% decrease in hotel motel tax. So unfortunately, it's not something that's just facing Madison County, but we are looking at it across the board. And unfortunately, it is something that we're having to look at with the school system. There will be no capital budget except mandated leases and agreements that the county had already entered into that they're obligated to, which is a total of $1.1 million. Money that is coming from the governor and the amount of $1.2 million is going toward, we were looking at buses, and also we have a mandate for our fire department for some breathing apparatus that we have to update due to concerns with employees going in unsafe into fires. So again, I wished I could give something more promising, but the direction to the county departments that came before the committee today was to go back and see how you can cut 30% out of your budget.
Okay, any questions for Karen?
Mr. Chair.
I had one.
Go, Jim.
If we look at our capital budget for FY21, did I hear Ms. Bell saying that we could only expect money for buses? We've got, we've got a commitment for these two schools we're building. Is that in, is that in the consideration, Ms. Bell?
The two schools, yes, that, of course, the first payment on that was not in to be year 22, FY22. We are aware of the technology and the furnishings. And so again, and this is where the committee plans to talk with Ray and Holly on Thursday, pushing that out until FY22, at least July 1. There was a question last week as to whether or not some of the care money might be used for the technology because there is a portion in there that says technology. But at this point, the only thing, and this could change by the time you guys get here on Thursday, but the directive that I was given by the Budget Committee and the Capital Committee would be, the only commitment that the county would make at this time would be mandated buses that are required. And I was asked today to send an email to Holly and Ray to see if those might even be pushed out to next year so that there would be no, so.
Yeah, and we talked about that with Brian, I did. We couldn't afford to do, not do any, but there's a number less than that we might be able to get away with for one year. And he's working to see how many that we might be able to forego purchasing. But certainly, we, we can't forego all of them, but we're working to see what that number really is. As you know, after 15 years, we have to not be able to drive those buses anymore. And we can apply for a waiver, but that costs quite a bit. And just depending on the condition of those buses, is it worthwhile or not? So we're working on that right now, Karen.
Mr. Campbell and Board, I would say, again, all of this is estimate. We hope things come in much rosier than what we're all projecting. But we have worked with several counties, the Comptroller's Office, all of the ones to give us guidance on what we should expect. We've even talked about a continuation budget, which as a county, we would have to have a budget still prepared by August 31st. Most of you have heard me say many times, state revenues stay two months behind. We really won't even know the impact of this until we close the fiscal year. Our March revenues will not be available from the state until May 20th. April revenues will be June 20th. So again, we've taken the information that we have and tried to project it. And again, it's something that none of us anticipated. Someone asked me how I would describe this, and I said, when we had the recession in '08, it was like moving through a slow red light. This was where you slammed on the brake, threw everybody through the windshield.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Ms. Bell.
Go, Jim.
Any insights on legislative initiatives in Nashville in June? Do you, do you have any insights on what direction that might take?
Yeah, I have been talking with Representative Todd very closely on this. I know that Knox County had said they've been talking directly to the governor. They do anticipate some waiver of maintenance of effort because we're not the only county facing this situation. Now, as to how much or what direction, no indications have been given. I know they've got a lot of subcommittees that have been looking at it, Representative Todd. And it does not, it does not apply just to school systems. We're talking about maintenance of. We're talking about maintenance of effort for highway departments, sheriff's departments, as well as school systems, because all three of those have maintenance of effort requirements. And so, uh, it's just that school systems tend to impact more as far as that goes, so.
Thank you.
Welcome, wish the news to be better.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I had another question for Ms. Bell.
Go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Bell, thank you for all of that. And again, um, I'm sorry that you had to present us that bad news. Um, but I'm going to ask of you the same thing that I asked of Ms. Keller. If you don't mind, and I know, like you said, those numbers may be different by the time you sit down with us on Thursday evening for our meeting. But, um, just again, like I asked Ms. Keller, if you don't mind to put those numbers, and like Mr. Campbell said, just the points that we need to know, the numbers that we need to be able to digest and, and really just look at and try to figure out how in the world are we going to, you know, run our school system with, with, you know, things like this happening? If you don't mind to send us an email with those projections, um, again, I was trying to write as fast as I could and I thought, well, I'll just ask her to email it to us like I did with Ms. Keller. But, um, I, this, I,
I'll be happy.
I do not envy her job, Ms. Bell. I do not envy her job at all.
I know, uh, welcome back for the first year.
Yes, yes. Um, trial by fire, I guess. Um, and another question I had is, um, to go back to what Mr. Washington was saying about the buses. You had given us that one point one million dollars capital budget figure, and you said that would be for budgets that, buses that we required.
Okay. Um, let me, let me correct that, Ms. Stewart.
Okay.
One is for committed capital that the county had. In other words, they had a car truck they're leasing, they had a building department truck they're leasing. Those were commitments.
Okay.
Available for buses is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
A state grant.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that-
Put all that in the email for you.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, and I think, I, I, I guess my next question is, and this is to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Campbell's question. You know, they have committed to build us a JCM and a Pope. Um, and I think when they agreed to do this, just as when the city agreed to build us a new mess, and we had no idea that we were going to be in, in the middle of a global pandemic. Um, and so I guess my question is, um, and I'm almost afraid to ask it, is there any chance that this isn't going to happen?
As far as Pope elementary, there is a very likely chance because right now they're not looking at doing any borrowing whatsoever there in fiscal year twenty-one. And the reason is, most of you know that what we do here at the county is we take the property tax and allocate the pennies to the different funds.
Yes, ma'am.
All of the, all, and we already had a couple of funds even before the pandemic hit that was going to be short, uh, as well as our local purpose, which we'd like to build up more because that's where we actually pull to maintain your maintenance of effort.
Sure.
At this time, we are most definitely, of course, already committed and, and signed to do the JCM project. Borrowing had not taken place for Pope, and I do not anticipate unless there's manna from heaven that drops from somewhere.
Or they raise taxes?
Well, um, right now, what we're looking at, it would be a very, very large tax increase just to make up the short pause that we're looking from the pandemic.
Okay. And, um, again, this might be a question for me to ask you off, like if we were at our normal meeting, I probably would wait till after the meeting to ask you this question. But I won't see you after the meeting because I'm sitting in the study at my house. Um, is, well, never mind, I'm not going to ask it. No.
Okay.
I'm not going to ask it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, uh, for, uh, Financial Director? Hey, if not, uh, let's look at, uh, reviewing our main agenda. Uh, if there's any questions, uh, concerning agendas, uh, you have in hand. If not, we will move to, uh, uh, resolution, emergency suspension of board policies by Dr. Williams.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so basically the resolution, uh, coming from the State Board of Education is a, uh, is in relation to, in regards to COVID-nineteen school closures. And basically, the resolution is a, uh, temporary suspension of some policies that are in direct conflict with some of the things and changes that were made as a result of COVID-nineteen. That po, those policies include the, the graduation requirements, the testing programs policy, the policy on teacher evaluations, policy on qualification and duties of the director of schools, and the policy on attendance. So this is a short-term resolution that would just, uh, take us through the end of the year to align policy, uh, suspension of policies that we are, uh, have changed in order to address COVID-nineteen. Are there any questions? And we will just need this approved for this year so that, uh, we can move forward. They asked that it, it is approved by the board.
You should have a copy of, um, those policies that Dr. Williams just mentioned. Any questions for her? Thank you, Dr. Williams.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, next, uh, FY twenty consolidation, the application approval for ID and ESA, uh, school years twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Ms. Carson?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you own, Ms. Carson?
Um, what we're asking, and this is done every year, um, we just need board approval to submit our consolidated application, which includes all of our grants, our Title One, Two, Three, Four, and the IDEA grants.
The IDEA grants, that the new grant, Ms. Carson?
No, sir, those are the special ed grants that we have always had.
Any questions from Ms. Carson? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, next, you see the, uh, Student Environmental Committee and those names and those students that represented, uh, their high schools. Um, we will be sending certificates to those, uh, schools for them. Uh, and it's unfortunate that, uh, they didn't have an opportunity to, uh, meet more with us. So next year, we'll, uh, yes, a suggestion to actually have those students selected earlier and maybe they can meet sooner and we get them more engaged. Uh, next, academic report, Mr. Washington?
Yes, um, I spoke with Dr. Malk and he and I discussed, um, what the report would look like. I've sent it to you guys, it's on your board docs also. Um, there's a series of things, including some recommendations, if he were here, that he would make to the superintendent, um, moving forward for, uh, twenty twenty-one school year. So, um, there'll be discussion, of course, with Dr. King regarding, um, remediation and intervention that'd be needed, uh, because we did have to end, um, you know, three months, uh, two months earlier than anticipated. Um, various curriculum and documents that we have done, um, through the pandemic. Uh, we used a program called I Ready to help us with our curriculum for K through eight. And a team of teachers, high school teachers, put together a program for English, math, social studies and sciences, um, to help, uh, keep students, as you mentioned earlier, engaged throughout this process. So, um, grades will be done, um, for seniors, uh, pretty soon now. I think we asked those to start, be turned in this week. And, uh, grade cutoff for everyone else will be, uh, May fifteenth. So as we organize this, these, uh, activities can enhance students' grades. They can't be used as punitive, but certainly they can ha, enhance a student's grade, um, during this period. As statewide, the grade cutoff was March twentieth. All right, so all grades were cut off as March twentieth. But all the activities that we're currently, uh, having students do can help enhance their grades. So, uh, we just keep working through the process and, um, trying to get the best results that we can.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Washington? Hey. Um, next on the agenda, uh, Human Capital Report, Dr. Green.
Other than the information that, uh, you all received, um, obviously, we didn't have any teacher, um, absentees because we were not in school for the month of, um, for the month of April. And, um, there were just a few, uh, hires and a few separations. Um, I think it's the shortest report that I've sent you all. Um, I didn't add the comparison of, uh, of days absent because, of course, like I said, we were not in school this year. And then the only other thing, which is not a part of the Human Capital Report, but it's just a list of, um, the list of, uh, tenure candidates that you all vote on on Thursday.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Green? Yeah, uh, next, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Carol mentioned our, uh, tenure teachers we, we voting on. You should have a list of those teachers by school. Um, unless there's some questions, we'll act on that in our Thursday meeting. Um, any questions about the teachers, uh, tenure teachers? Okay, uh, next, uh, Teachers of the Year Luncheon and, uh, Teacher Appreciation. Ms. Carol also mentioned those, uh, due to the timing of, uh, uh, this pandemic. Uh, those events have, uh, have been pushed. Well, of course, the appreciation with the teachers not being in session, uh, uh, we opt out. But at luncheon, I don't know if that's going to be rescheduled or not. We'll be, uh, looking and reviewing that, uh, for the dates. Okay? Uh, next Superintendent Evaluation, you have a copy of the evaluation, uh, your packet and on your board doc. Um, and we need those back to Janet by, uh, the eighth, am I right, Janet? Uh, on the next Friday. Uh, of course, uh, Superintendent Washington will be doing a self-eva, uh, evaluation also. Okay? Any questions about the evaluation? Okay, smooth, uh, review hours, schedule board meeting for the month of June. Uh, we're scheduled, um, to meet on the fifteenth at a, uh, combined work session. And I think we probably did that, uh, not knowing that we were going to be in this pandemic. So I want to, uh, on the board to just, just discuss, actually not having a combined meeting, but having a, uh, work session and a board meeting separately, uh, especially since we've got, um, the issue of the, um, budget that we've got to work through and, uh, several other things. So with that, um, any comments about, uh, changing that, um, combined work session to a work session and, uh, separate board meeting? No questions, no comments?
Uh, yeah, uh, I'm sorry, Pete, uh, why is it and did we, uh, schedule that meeting, uh, so late rather than, uh, the week before?
Uh, I asked Janet, we really were, uh, struggling trying to, uh, figure out why we did that. And we weren't sure if it was because of vacations, um, after graduations, those type of things. But, uh, the fifteenth is actually in the third week. We usually meet, uh, of course, the second week.
Right.
And the work session would have been on the eighth and the board meeting would have been on the twelfth. Um, or the eleventh, I'm sorry, that Thursday on the eleventh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the reasons was I was going to be out of town that week, uh, that the board meeting was supposed to be.
Okay.
I won't be out of town that week now because everything's been canceled.
Oh, okay, I, I knew, we thought it was something dealt with vacations or, um,
I had a, I had a children's retreat.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Okay, well, can we, uh, just put it back on our, at our resident time in the second week of June?
Uh, that's what I'm asking, uh, which would be the eighth for the work session and the eleventh for the board meeting. They're good with everyone?
That's fine with me.
Fine with me.
Good for me.
Thank y'all, thank you. So the common consent, we'll, we'll change that and we have, uh, Janet's, uh, sent out the notices. Thank y'all. Uh, next, uh, Madison and JCM project updates, uh, Superintendent Washington?
I emailed you guys today, an update from the, um, from Healthy Communities regarding those, uh, projects. They're both underway. Um, if you drive by Madison, there's a lot of dirt work and stuff being going on and work with inside the actual school of JCM is being conducted as far as asbestos abatement, uh, tearing out of walls and tiles and things of that nature. I haven't had a chance to go in it myself, um, been pretty busy the last couple of weeks, but, um, I do intend to get in there and just look for myself to see what's going on. But I emailed you guys the actual construction status report as of, uh, as of this morning. So you had that, uh, in your email. It's not in board docs, it should have been in your email, but I think Ms. Stack put it in your board docs also. Yes, all right?
Mr. Washington, move over here and follow with that COVID-nineteen update.
So, um, yeah, we can give an update. Like I said before, we are in the process of grades. We're in the process of scheduling graduations. I sent you guys an email with the tentative schedule, which we're getting firmer every day. We meet at the ballpark with the four principals that want to use that, uh, facility tomorrow at two thirty. We can outline plans there. We'll also discuss contingency plans in case of weather, whether we postpone or we schedule at a different venue. Um, we know that the ballpark will allow us to have, uh, the event streamed so everybody can still see the event. The ballpark will allow for distancing. Um, Southside is going to conduct too many graduations. They'll have A through L at ten o'clock on the nineteenth and M through Z at two o'clock on the nineteenth. They'll allow plenty of time for people to, uh, vacate the area. Uh, the, uh, graduations at the ballpark are currently scheduled for four o'clock and seven thirty respectively, with Madison and, uh, Liberty being on Thursday and Early College and Northside being on Friday the twenty-second. Uh, we're getting close to the mark of serving a hundred thousand meals. I think we're well over ninety-something right now. I'm sure we'll get a number by Friday. Uh, she used to provide us a, a total update on Fridays, but I know we're getting close to that amount. Everyone still seems to be appreciative of it. And, um, we continue to, uh, work daily to make sure that we're taking all the needs, care of all the needs that we can within the district, which is doing all that we can do with that, that is within our power, uh, to continue to do what we should be doing for our students and families. Uh, that's it.
Okay. Uh, thank you, sir. Um, next, uh, Construction Management Contract or Resolution. Does anyone have any questions we, uh, about that contract or the resolution? We discussed that in our Budget Committee meeting, um, earlier. And I think Dale answered, um, most of the questions unless there's some questions that came up since then.
Now, you're not talking about the resolution, are you? With the contract, you're just talking about?
Yes, yes, ru, resolution for the construction, uh, management contract.
Okay, yes, I had a question.
Sure.
On section one, the second page, it says that the Board of Education approves the construction contract and authorizes Superintendent Ray Washington or Chairman James P. Johnson to execute the construction contract. Now, this is just me thinking. I believe that two signatures are better than one because sometimes things have a way of coming back and no one remembers exactly, um, how things were executed, um, pertaining to this particular, uh, uh, construction that's going on. So do it have to be, I'm just asking a question. I don't know if Dale is here, Attorney Thomas is here tonight, but if he is, I just wanted to know what it signifies to have two signatures instead of one?
Yes, Dale is on.
The, typically, and I know we did that on the architect contract and several contracts in the past, we do a, uh, provision in the resolution that gives either the superintendent or the board chair the authority to sign on behalf of this district. Uh, that, that resolution is going to be part of the, uh, permanent record of the district and will- And we'll clarify who has that authority. I mean, I could have put an "and." We generally don't do "and" because all we need is one person to sign the contract on behalf of the district.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that, that it could just only have one signature and that was not an error. Okay?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I had a question, and I'm not exactly sure who I need to direct this to. I guess I'll start with Attorney Thomas. You know, when, when we vote on this resolution on Thursday night, we're entering into a construction contract with a construction company to build us a K-8 school that Ms. Bell just told us that the county was not going to borrow the money for this coming fiscal year. And so I guess my question to you is, is if we enter into this contract to build a school that the county's not going to fund, then what recourse do we have? Because we'll owe these people money.
No, that, that's the beauty of this contract.
Okay.
We, the contract is just the contract for the terms. At every stage, we have to give a notice to proceed.
Sure.
So before there's any money incurred, any expenses incurred, the district will have to give the construction manager that authority to proceed.
Okay.
And, and the thinking was that if, if the county commission did fund it, we didn't want to be scrambling to try to get a contract in place.
Sure.
We want to go ahead and have something in place so that we would have the flexibility to move forward. And that's what, that's what that gives us is that flexibility.
Sure. Sounds like we might not have to do that until 2021, '22 fiscal year.
That was a good question, Shannon.
Well, I just, I, you know, and, and I think, and I would like to actually, I, I wish we were all in the same room. This is just really one of those situations where I wish we could all look each other in the face. But, you know, part of my district five and Jim's district five, you know, a lot of our families that live in that district attend Pope School. And I know that the majority of the families who attend Pope School live in District Four, which Ms. Black and Mr. Massey represent. But we need a K-8 school in that part of the county. And the county's been saying that they were going to get us one. And we, you know, we fought like cats and dogs to pick the property. We got the property. The property's been purchased. We've, you know, we've, we've done everything we need to do. And now we find ourselves in a situation. And, and I think it's unfortunate that we're in the middle of a global pandemic. But, um, I, I still want my voice to be heard and I want everyone to hear me say loud and clear, I want a K-8 school in the northwest part of this county. End of story. And so I, I think we all have tough decisions to make. You know, us as a school board have tough decisions to make. The county commission has tough decisions to make. As, you know, we've watched the city over the last couple of weeks make some tough decisions. But, you know, that's what we were elected to do. We were elected to make tough decisions. And again, I want to, I want a new school on that, in that part of the county. And it, it just really sucks. I can't think of any other way to describe it. That we're in the middle of a global pandemic and it's not going to happen in the foreseeable future. But I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to owe these folks some money to help us build a school that we're not going to be able to have the funds to build. So, Mr. Thomas, thank you for answering my question.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I just echo on what Shannon just stated? I think the entire board has agreed that, you know, we would like to see a school out there at Pope. And even though we're at this time where we are concerning this pandemic, things are bound to get better. And certainly, I believe that the commission will hold up their bargain when it comes to building this school out in the northern area because they know that it's needed due to the overcrowdedness. So, you know, I say not to worry about this at this time. Let's just take one step at a time and just see how things come forward. But I truly believe that they would help to finance this particular project.
Any other comments? Okay. Thanks, Dale. Next, on the agenda, Dr. Martin King's contract. All of you should have a copy of the contract. Dale and I worked with Dr. King and Dale worked with Dr. King's attorney. So we've got the finished product. So if there's any questions, feel free to ask this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, have we designated a particular salary range for Dr. King?
Yes, it's in the contract. You have, you didn't have to get your copy?
Yeah. Maybe I'm overlooking it. I didn't see it. Hold on.
Yes, on number six, on the compensation.
On what page is it?
Page two.
Okay.
On the compensation.
Oh, okay. I see it now. Okay. Yes, I do. Thank you.
Any other questions concerning the contract? Not, we already discussed the budget. Ms. Keller gave us some good information concerning that. Then we, we're still working in that, with that process. Any other questions related to the agenda? Do you have, need to ask, or Superintendent Washington, did you have anything that you need to add?
Mr. Chairman.
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Shannon?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I, I was helping my children get their dinner. And I missed the date that we need to have Superintendent Washington's evaluation to Ms. Janet.
This Friday, the 8th.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. They're hungry.
No problem, no. Also, any suggestion of general items for June board meeting? Get those to Board Secretary or myself or Superintendent Washington. With that, any other discussion before we adjourn this meeting? If not, thank you all.
I'm sorry, I was muted in talking. For Thursday's meeting, what exactly are the action items that we have?
It's, it should be on your BOE Connect. Doris, let me tell you, let me do right now. What's the, the resolution on emergency suspension of policies? FY20 consolidation application, tenure teachers, and Dr. King's contract. And the construction resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? I didn't mean to cut, cut off so, so shortly. Everybody's good?
Good.
All right, see y'all Thursday.